And 25% of the nation's hospitals are identified as a top performer. And the medical staff, and the nursing staff, and the pharmacy, and all the skilled professionals at Cape Fear Valley weren't just recognized in one area, they were recognized in four different areas: heart attack, heart failure, pneumonia, and surgical care. So, when you think about the growth and development of the health system, certainly as we grow to meet the needs of our ever-growing community, we're working towards that. But the quality of care, and then, most recently, I'm sure people have heard of this, the Cape Fear Valley Health System was named as the best place to work in 2015 by the Fayetteville Observer. So, we're extraordinarily proud of the work that we're performing there for our community. Is there more work to be done? Absolutely. Is the work hard? Absolutely. You've got people there every single day, 24/7, 365 days, performing very difficult, very hard work when our community needs them. But I'm here to tell you, we all think it's the most rewarding work that we could ever participate in, to be there for your community when they need you. And in our commitment to our region, to Cumberland County, is we're going to continue to grow, not just our facilities, but the quality of care. So, I really do appreciate the opportunity to come and tell you about the work of your health system and the work of all those skilled professionals. So, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you, Mike. At this time, any board members have any questions for our CEO of our hospital?
No, we're just proud, Mike. Thank you so much.
We're very proud, and we wanted to share this. We asked Mike to clear his schedule as soon as he could, and please come by and share this, not only with us, we've heard this, but with the public at large. So, thank you, Mike. We salute you. I also want to recognize Breeden Blackwell, who is very instrumental in a lot of the things that Mike does well. And with that, we'll see you at the... If I can... I'm sorry.
And I just, you know, healthcare is forever-changing, and there's just challenges out there that, for everybody, but I think that, and I just want to make sure, you know, I've only been on the board for about a year, and I've seen the successes that Cape Fear Valley have done, and I just want to say, congratulations, not to you, but that entire team that you put together, because it's working for this community. So, I just want to congratulate you and all of those in the Cape Fear Valley Health System.
Thank you very much. Your support of the health system has been tremendous. It's allowed us to grow to meet the needs. So, thank you very much.
Next, Adam Mascanon.
Item number two is a presentation on the 2015 Ozone Advanced Action Plan Report by the Executive Director, Ms. Hannah Aaronwright.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The PowerPoint's just going to run, so don't even worry about that. I believe you also have it in your packets. Sustainable Sand Hills is here to present to the Cumberland County Commissioners on behalf of the air quality stakeholders. Anne Pham Po, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. A year ago, we came to talk about air quality, and there was a new and pressing reason. The EPA had debated lowering standards for ozone emissions, and I am happy to tell you today that we are in attainment. The new standards ultimately ended up passing in October. We had based our report that we submitted in September, as was due, on the old standards of 75 parts per billion, or parts per billion, or parts per million, it doesn't really matter, it's exactly the same thing, it just depends on where you put the comma, right? All right, moving on. We had this whole thing about whether it was .07 parts per million, or 70 parts per billion, anyway. Regardless of what it is, they finalized the new standards, and I'm happy to report also that since 2010, we have been in attainment and below those standards. The new standards are 70 parts per billion. We are averaging 61 parts per billion to 65 parts per billion. We have two air quality monitors in our area. One of them happens to demonstrate that we have a lot of air traffic pollution from our interstate highway system, which is not necessarily fair to Cumberland County, but just goes to show that we do what we do well. We've also had a couple of cold seasons which help our air quality numbers. So, it is important that we continue to focus on ozone and reductions in NOx and VOC emissions as we go forward. Let's see here. I wanted to remind the council also, on behalf of the air quality stakeholders, that in 2013, we received this comment from the EPA. This is one of the best locally-led paths forward the EPA's Office of Air Quality Planning and Standards has received. We will add it to the short list of plans that we refer to areas when they want to know which path forward examples they should start with. We received similar comments, although possibly not as glowing, on our most recent report on the ozone advance, which Commissioner Faircloth was instrumental in setting up, and we welcome Larry Lancaster to join us on the ozone, on the air quality stakeholders' board. Wow. Hello. You all have received copies of the reports, along with our copies of the calendar. We do the calendar competition every year with Cumberland County Schools. We have some bright artists and scientific minds in our school district, and I commend you on the Cumberland County Schools' participation. Phampow's region has shifted in the last little bit, and now includes parts of Harnett County and Robinson County. We have not yet managed to engage them or include them in the poster competition, or in other areas that we do with air quality and the ozone advance program, because of the boundaries of Cumberland County as it relates to the air quality stakeholders now. But, we believe that ozone advance is moving forward as a program. We will continue to meet the standards and meet attainment for the EPA's regulations, and that we believe this county is doing a great job at reducing emissions and continuing to keep our eye on the ball, which is a breathable, healthy future. Can I answer any questions?
Any question for Hannah this time?
Just one.
Please.
Minor. Because you do refer to the town of Eastover in the body.
Yes, ma'am.
But not on the cover.
Not on the cover. Oh, my.
But it's in the body of the report, I know.
Yes.
So, it is included.
Sin of omission. Eastover is one of the municipalities that is part of our compact. All the municipalities in Cumberland County are. Yes, ma'am. I also want to, sorry, one last quick item. Fort Bragg has been a fantastic partner in this, and we continue to look for ways to embrace their carbon, sorry, their tree bank program and sustainment of the longleaf pine habitat as part of this program. So, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you so much, Hannah, for the presentation. Anybody up here know the chemical symbol for ozone? Okay, just checking. That's my boy. I see behind David McCune, I see a visitor from the town of Spring Lake. Attorney Colonel Tad Davis is city manager of Spring Lake. Welcome, Ted. Thank you for being here. Thank you for all you do for Spring Lake and our community as a whole.
Thank you for your continued support as well.
Okay, at this time, we'll have approval of the agenda, Ms. Cannon.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we add an economic development session under closed session.
Okay, okay. So, is that added? Do I hear a motion?
With that addition, I would move to approve the agenda.
Second. Okay, moved in second in discussion. All in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay. Next, Adam Mascanon.
Item number four is the consent agenda.
Okay. Do I hear a motion from?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in second in discussion. All in favor?
Unanimous.
Can't turn the pages fast enough.
Item number five is normally our public hearings. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we have no rezoning cases or minimum housing cases for this meeting. So, we'll move to item number six, which is a consideration of a lease and a contract for facility renovation project with the Alliance Behavioral Healthcare, and I would ask Mr. Moorfield to review this item, please.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
I just kind of got, I kind of wrapped this up. Tracy Jackson had been working with Alliance folks on this for several weeks before we finally got to this point. But the board's already received some information on this. The lease that we have finally ended up with is, the board already approved the lease term, and in the last closed session, asked the board to consider the $12 lease rate throughout the term, throughout the initial term, any extensions, and the board agreed to that. So, those have been set. The other aspects of the lease are basically the same conditions that the Alliance has had since it's been occupying the executive place, facility. One change will be with the renovation, if the board, you know, you've received information on the proposed leasehold improvements to the building at Alliance's request, and that was one of the issues that we had to work with Alliance in getting them to continue leasing that building. When that was presented to the board earlier, the proposal at that time was for it to be an Alliance project, with the county contributing to some of the funding and some of the purchase of the equipment. That has been changed now, because it is a county facility, it will be a county project, it'll be bid, and the project will be managed by the county, and Alliance has agreed, and the county has discussed at length, that the funding for that will be entirely paid out of the funds being carried forward in the Alliance budget for, of local Cumberland County funds, that, for this, any of the years that we have had funding agreements. That will be what the payment, how the project will be paid for. Initially, there was a proposal for there to be a rent waiver. There will not be a rent waiver. Alliance, in order to stay in that facility when the construction is going forward, they will move to one floor or the other, so that they will not be on the same floor as construction when that's going on. And in fairness, the county has agreed that there will be a rent abatement for this, when that's going on, for the time they don't get to use a portion of the facility. And so, that's going to take some coordination. Jeffrey Brown is adding that to his plate to coordinate that and work that out. So, since this is approved by the board, we will move forward. Jeff, you know, as you called the board in the last couple of months, has approved a request from Jeffrey Brown to approve design firms, so we have pretty much a quick process in place to go ahead and move forward with selecting a design firm and getting the final design, and moving forward. Of course, as this project develops, the board will make the final approval of the contract as usual, and that sort of stuff, but we're just at the design stage now. The attachment that's included in the contract are the documents that have been back and forth between the county and Alliance in the past, and just included all those, so there's no questions about what the design work was going to be. They have already exchanged the CAD drawings, will provide those to Mr. Brown for his use in moving forward with the selection of the design professional. So, we're ready to proceed with the project. So, if there are any questions on any of that?
Any questions, county attorney? Okay, let's see, Jimmy first.
Mine's, real quick, Mr. Moorfield. Is this the same lease that we approved at the facilities meeting?
You didn't approve a lease of the facility.
That we discussed.
You discussed it, you didn't really have all the lease terms. At that time, the only term that had been actually discussed with Alliance was the length of the term, the three years, and there was two-year extensions. The, that's the reason that we came back in closed session at the last meeting and asked for approval of the proposal for the $12 per square foot lease rate for the entire seven years, if they are there that long. The other terms that are in the lease are consistent with the terms that have been in place all along, except for the rent abatement, when they're not, for the portion they're not occupied.
That was a pretty big part. I mean, there was a lot of discussion that went in about this. We'd also talked about there being some consideration on credit, if you will, for some of the valuations that the county was giving, was...
Well, with the way the funding was proposed initially, that would have been something considered, but with it now being paid for entirely out of the carryover funds that Alliance is carrying forward, that, it is local funds that Alliance is carrying forward, but it's under Alliance's control. Alliance has agreed to use those funds to pay for the project entirely, instead of the county contributing some portion of that.
I guess my only issue, Mr. Chairman, is, I feel like what we talked about at the facilities committee isn't really where we're at right now, so it's, things have changed a little bit.
And yes, sir, they have.
I'll take credit on my side, too, because I made the assumption, and everybody here knows what that means, but that what we talked about was what we were going to be approving, but I didn't realize there were some changes. All right, thank you.
And I think, to Mr. Keith, I think the funding source has changed.
Yes.
Because we were going to pay some upfront, and then Alliance was going to pay from, but we're taking all this from the monies that they're actually holding in, I guess I would call a desk row, or, and so, it's all our funds that are being used, which takes me to section five of this document, I guess it's page 91 on our screens. Those are our funds, and so, it says, "Alliance shall solely approve the final design and shall do any change orders." I would be much more in line with this if it was in conjunction with the county, because it is our fund, and I'll tell you, anytime you do some change orders, there's going to be some price adjustments on that, and I don't think that that should solely be in Alliance's purview. And if you go down a little further, where it says that Alliance shall select, that's number six, all office furnishing, I think that should also be in conjunction, I know it's going to be pursuant to the general statute, but should be in conjunction with the county. So, with those two changes, that would be the two changes that I would recommend. Those are our funds that are being used, and I don't think, clearly, that should just be solely in the purview of the Alliance.
And the reason is that way, this was a, there was a great deal of discussion at the end about those provisions, and that was, what you just mentioned, Mr. Adams, were the last two pieces of this that were resolved. Alliance is concerned that the costs stay within the estimated estimate now of $1.3 million, and I think that's why they were wanting to have some say-so into the, any change orders. For the size of this project, it would be unusual if there'd be any significant change orders, and we made exceptions, unless there's something, and that would arising out of an issue of design, that would be involving the structural integrity of the building or any of its components, and those would be resolved by Mr., in the counties, not Alliance. So, you know, we can go back to drawing board, but it took a...
Well, I'm not trying to take Alliance out of the picture. I mean, Alliance is clearly in the picture. I just don't believe it should be solely in their purview. This is, I mean, we're doing, I think, the county's going to do the engineering part, and I think we all entered into that, but I think any kind of change orders or any of that ought to be done in conjunction with each other. We ought to be working on this together, so that there's no surprises. If my county engineer walks in and there's a big change order done by the Alliance, then we bear the cost of that. I mean, I'm just saying, do it in conjunction, and I may be, and like I said, I'm only one commissioner, but I think it ought to be in conjunction with the county, and not solely ours or theirs, but just in conjunction with each other.
Now, all the change orders would be recommended by the architect. I mean, these are not going to come from us, they'll be coming from the architects.
It says, "Alliance shall solely approve the final design, shall evaluate the construction bids, and Alliance shall solely have final approval of any change orders." Clear to me that I don't have any control over that.
All right.
If the architect says, "I want to change this," and my engineer may say, "Well, let's look at this," I don't have any control. I can't say no, I can't say yes, it's just there. That's the problem.
We can go back, we can take it back.
Okay, here's what I'm hearing, the two people raising issues here are members of the facilities committee, and this was discussed in the facilities committee, and then, this is, am I hearing that this is different from what y'all discussed?
Yes, sir. It was.
It is, okay.
There are certain aspects of this, with the funding primarily, that's different.
Are y'all comfortable with passing this, or with changing this, or sending it back to the facilities committee? What do you want to do with it?
I don't necessarily know that I want to send it all the way back to the facilities committee, because I think we want to be able to get these things done. I'm just asking that we put the language in there, and I guess we got somebody from Alliance, just in conjunction with, and nobody has sole authority to do one or the other. That's all I'm asking.
We can go back, go back to Alliance with that.
Mr. Keith.
Well, I, follow up. Specifically, we asked during the facilities committee, who's got the ownership of the FFE? And the answer was, the Alliance will have ownership of the FFE. Well, according to paragraph six, "The Alliance shall select all the office furniture, security features, and fixtures to be used in the leasehold improvements, and the county shall be responsible for purchasing such furnishings and fixtures in accordance with North Carolina general statutes." So, basically, they can pick whatever they want, at whatever budget they want, up to the limit, I guess, of the 1.3, and they own it.
Yes, sir, and that's the reason that the attachments, those were Alliance's attachments, that their engineering firm, Hury, put together as far as the design. I mean, we're doing, this is a leasehold improvement, that we're doing to, or trying to do to Alliance's specifications. That's what they have requested. In other words, they want to pick the furnishings. Yes, that's been an issue with Alliance.
If they own it, we shouldn't be responsible, I mean, we should own it, if we're going to buy it, buy it.
We're not buying it, Mr. Keith. The fund, you've got to understand, the funds that have been transferred to Alliance through our funding agreement are Alliance's, they're Alliance's funds. They are local Cumberland County funds, I mean, they're not using state funds or federal funds, but they are in the Alliance's budget, they're not in our budget anymore. They have agreed to use those funds to pay for this, rather than paying for part of them, and us paying for part of it.
I guess my frustration, Mr. Chairman, is, is, we changed what we discussed at the facilities committee, and we brought it forward to it. But, however it rolls down, it rolls down. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, yet another member of the facilities committee, Mr. Edge.
I don't know if I was there or not.
You were there.
But I think that one thing to keep in mind as we move forward, they are paying $1.3 million out of the funds that we have allocated for them, but that is part of their fund balance, too, that... But I think to keep in mind, they're using our building, if they, and that was a point of contention with us originally, is that they were going to go out and rent some other space, and that they would, and I'm sure they would have to buy the furnishings there. And I can understand Mr. Adams's concern over us not having a say-so. However, number eight, I don't know if that's enough authority given to Jeffrey with everything else he's got to do, but maybe we could reword number eight somehow or another, so that Jeffrey could approve it. I mean, I mean, let's face it, let's be honest, I don't think, I serve on the Alliance board, too, and I don't think, and Kelly's here tonight, I don't think they're going to go out and buy the most elaborate furniture that you could possibly buy, or make any major renovations in a building that they don't even own. But I would like to see that maybe number eight could be reworded some way or another, that change orders, particularly, because he's got a good point about change orders, because we all know that when change orders occur, most of the time, it costs you money. There's very few times that it doesn't cost you money. That maybe Jeffrey could be a contact person for the county that could approve this. Is that possible? I don't mean to belabor this.
Well, that was the initial proposal with Alliance. Yes, sir, I mean, that was the initial, just sort of standard language. These were issues that Alliance had issues with.
And I understand, I don't think we need to change number eight. I think if, I'm just saying, in five and six, if we just say, "In consultation with, you know, Mr. Brown," and not, and take out the word "solely," that would be, I mean, that's just where I am. I think there has to be some consultation with our folk when it's $1.3 million, as opposed to changing number eight. Number eight is just, it's just two words.
And I also think that we need to protect our own asset of the building itself. I mean, you talk about security, and you talk about other things, we don't know what's going to happen. So, I think there's got to be some consultation with our staff. I mean, I believe it can be done, I believe it can be done very reasonably, but I think that, I think maybe we're not being given enough authority, is I guess what I'm seeing, Rick. And I hope we can work this out without bringing it back again.
What do you propose to do? Do you want this board to go ahead and pass it off now?
Well, I don't think we ought to pass it exactly the way it's worded. I'd like to change the wording on it.
Okay, we meet again on February the 1st. When does this lease need to go into effect?
The lease, the lease actually would go into effect January the 1st of this year, since that's approved.
Oh, okay.
This is just a contract for the renovations, for the leasehold.
Okay, the contract. I don't see a date on it.
Yeah, I'm talking, yeah. They're two separate things.
Okay.
Maybe we should direct this question to Kelly, if we could. I know she's not, she's the one that handles the money, anyway, but maybe, maybe she could clarify this, or maybe she could say that she thinks that is reasonable, or maybe it's not. Tell us what you think.
Well, if I can speak to two issues. First, the furniture. It was our intention to obviously go the least costly avenue, of course, but we wanted the office to have an Alliance look and feel, so the furniture that we had purchased in all our offices would ideally be the furniture that would be purchased for this site. Again, we have always gone to the lowest cost bid and followed general statutes, so we wouldn't be purchasing anything outrageous. As far as the consultation regarding the change orders, to Mr. Moorfield's point, it was ideally to try to keep the cost down. We were unsure sort of what could go in there without sort of our approval regarding to the design, but I sort of, I can understand, and I can't speak for our attorney, but I can understand the need to have a consultation with the county.
So, we're both wanting the same things, basically.
Correct, yes. We have similar interests in that we want to do this in the least costly possible way to get this project done.
All right, I need a motion.
What I would, what I would propose is to make a motion to approve the lease. I think the lease is a separate from this part that we're talking about now, so I would make a motion to approve the lease, and she can't speak for her board, but to take back the issues as to number five on the construction part, five and six, so I guess we can deal with that.
Do I hear a second? I'll say it, man. Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the lease. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, now, so, we're going to defer the construction agreement. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, how is that going to come back to us?
Yeah, that's the question. That's the question I have.
We'll negotiate for Alliance, and bring it back to the board. I don't see any reason going back to the facilities committee. We can bring it back to the board's next meeting, hopefully.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to table this matter until the next meeting?
Should move.
Moving second, to table the construction agreement until February the 1st. Is that right?
Yes.
That's our next meeting? Okay, any discussion?
Well, yes, sir. Thank, I'm just understanding, did you just say that it would go back to the facilities committee, or what?
I don't see any reason, I mean, if you want to do, we can take it back to the facilities committee, but then I thought it would be the second meeting in February.
Okay, okay.
Is this light? Ken, did you have?
I pushed it a while ago, I don't think.
But just a proviso, if they agree with it, I don't think it needs to go back to the facilities. If they agree with the changes, if they don't, I guess then it needs to go back to the facilities. That would be the only, but I don't see any problem with that, because it's not a major.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir. One more thing, and I'm not going to belabor this any longer, but you're saying, you just said that she couldn't make the decision for the board. She had to go back to her people, anyway, correct?
Right.
So, if she has to go back to her people, anyway, why not go ahead and take it all the way back to the facilities, to have her to come back and report to the facilities before it come back to the board?
Well...
I mean, I don't know, I'm just saying.
As I see, the facilities committee doesn't have another meeting until March.
That's right.
Unless we call a special meeting, the facilities committee. Any other discussion on the motion?
Just a question, is that enough time?
Our board meets on February 4th, so if you need to have anything approved, it will be on February 4th, so I'm not sure if we, I'm not sure what our attorney may need to take the full lease, she may be able to approve those changes.
Okay, well, then it's not going to work, you defer it here till the 1st, right?
Mr. Faircloth, if I may, let's defer it to the 1st, and by then, Kelly can take it back to their attorney, if their attorney can approve it. We don't need to bring this back to either board, for that matter. Am I right?
Mr. Councilman, yes. Your lights off. Any other discussion on the motion? It's coming back to this board on the 1st.
Okay.
Unless we change the motion.
Well, it'll come back on the 1st, unless there's some opposition from the Alliance personnel. Is that reasonable to, is that reasonable, Rick?
If they are, I guess the problem is that the things you're suggesting are the things we've already discussed, and they were objectionable to Alliance at that time, but we'll, I can see, okay? I mean, that's...